So let's go ahead and we'll get started. This is a special meeting. It's the Cootney County Mayor's Meeting. Today's date is April 2, 2025. The time is 10:07 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the Agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We're going to move right into business. First of all, I want to thank everyone for showing up. I think the attendance here is fantastic, and we have a lot more cities, smaller cities, that are joining us. So I really appreciate you taking the time to come to this meeting. Before we get started, I would like it maybe if we could just start from my left and introduce, we can all introduce ourselves real quick. Just go around the room.
Leslie Duncan, Cootney County.
Pat Braden, Civil Deputy Prosecuting Attorney, Cootney County.
Woody McGovern, Corral Lane.
Troy Timison, Corral Lane City Administrator.
Tyrell Stevenson, Corral Lane Tribe.
Alan Davis-Haden.
Bill Lee, House of.
Lee Say, Green Light.
Ray Martin.
Richard Inal, Gardens.
Warren Wilson, City Administrator, Post Falls.
That's what I'm doing.
Randy Westland, Post Falls City Councilman.
Emily Smith, Rathram City Attorney.
Leon Deuce, Rathram's City Administrator.
Mike L, Rathram City Mayor.
David Callahan, Cootney County Community Development Director.
Mark Everline, Commissioner.
Bruce Matarri, Cootney County Commissioner. And just for those of you, when you are going to speak, try to make sure you hit the button and get the green light so that way it's caught on video. So people who are watching at home can hear what you're saying. The first item is the County-City Communication Protocols. This is a discussion item, and it has my name next to it. And it's actually, it's interesting. I was sitting down having lunch with Mayor Jacobson, and we were talking a little bit about just some of the issues, county, city, and communication. And one of the things that came up was there's just things that each of the different jurisdictions do that would be nice if there was as much, as much advance warning as possible when something happens. And Mayor Jacobson is not here today, but what came up was that the Solid Waste Department for the county decided that it wasn't going to pick up Christmas trees. And I think from the mayor's perspective, they kind of found out at the last second, and so they kind of had to scramble to figure out what to do as far as Christmas tree removal. And so it really kind of got me thinking that maybe we should try to talk about developing protocols for how the cities and the county can communicate among the various departments so that if there's a change at the county level, that the cities can be notified. And it's a little more proactive than kind of finding out at the last second. And so if anyone has any thoughts about that, want to share some experiences, certainly open to it. But I was going to propose that we could maybe start, because it kind of addresses item number two on growth, that our community development department could start working with your building departments and community development, and start working on developing a platform that works well for them. And then we can use that as a template for other departments so that when an event occurs in your jurisdiction, it's, there's a methodology so that ours and others can at least be aware of that change. Does that sound like something that people would be open to?
Just for discussion, Troy Timison, we do a heads up on a daily basis to let council know things that are happening. It includes road closures. It would include a tower crane going up on Sherman Avenue. You probably don't hear about that. Would you want to go to that level of communication as opposed to Christmas trees are not going to be picked up?
Well, I think it depends on the various departments. Some might want that degree, others not so much. Really, it's something that seems to be brand new, to have a more formalized communication protocols among the various departments. But it was just something that came up. We had a couple, you know, we talked about it, and it definitely was something that Mayor Jacobson felt could be improved upon. And so I decided that, you know, we could make this a discussion item to see if it's something that the, each of your cities would like to further develop.
So one of the things I was thinking of then is maybe having the department heads from the different groups kind of talk about what they would like to see as far as the communication goes rather than necessarily on our level. Because as Troy mentioned, some of the things may want to know about and others won't, but we don't necessarily know that from our level up here either. So that might be a good way to start out that communication protocol, is having the community development groups get together and talk about those things that they would like to know about. And I know like our building officials meet on a regular basis, county, city, that, and they have their meetings so that they have uniformity within the county and things like that. And they're doing it through meetings rather than through emails, for example. So maybe if those different departments are able to get together, we can, they can help to kind of find out what they need to communicate on.
And I've talked with our IT department. I mean, it could be something as simple as just having a website where you can post a document that just describes what's going on. But I thought, if anything, we could start with the building departments kind of identifying what's important, what's not, and what the best protocol is for this kind of communication. And if they can come up with something that makes sense, then we can kind of cookie cutter that for other departments, and then they can determine what's important and what's not amongst them.
Something that jumps out at me is when we do land use hearings in the city, we send out notices to, I think, 30 different public agencies for, hey, this might impact you. Do you have any comment on what we're doing? As far as I know, that's just like an email address that we have for each organization. So if each jurisdiction here could just apply an email address, we could do a mailing list for any sort of things that we know are going to impact other jurisdictions and then get a notice out that way. And then each administration can kind of forward it on to whoever needs to know that within the, kind of within the jurisdiction.
And that's for soliciting feedback as well?
So on more critical issues, maybe there's a, kind of we use a push technology where maybe you get texts, something that's more time sensitive would probably be in order. I would, I would support something like that.
Well, I think it would be best if the departments could figure that out. But yes, I understand. The idea is that, you know, for us elected officials, we kind of come and go. And so developing a communication methodology that's below us, that's where the people are, you know, it's their career, is really the intent here.
I mean, we have a dedicated phone in our clerk's office that's used for a number of things, password resets, but I would envision that would be used as, you know, you're right, people come and go, but that would stay, and that would be a mechanism for receiving alerts or things like that.
Okay. Any other thoughts, feedback? Well, assuming that the board here is okay on a direction, then we could have our community development reach out.
As long as he has bandwidth, sure.
Director Callahan?
I'm perfectly fine with that. And it would be helpful, Mayor Jordan, for things like that Erickson Road issue, where we're still dealing with a lady that has 13 pages of concerns over that. She's certain that we've missed the boat on dozens of items.
That was one of them.
Yes, sir. So I'm hopeful this sort of communication could head off, that sort of thing.
Does anyone have any questions, thoughts on this item? Assuming there's no objection to it, then our community development will reach out to your building departments, and hopefully we can develop some sort of a framework for communication. Okay, that's item one. Item two, growth. It's a discussion item. My name is here, and this is really a continuation of some things that we've talked about in the past, where we can continue to work together. We've mentioned trying to possibly link some comp plans together and have more of a community comp plan, and that the different jurisdictions can kind of understand what the other jurisdictions hope to accomplish in the coming years as far as growth and so forth. I think we all know that growth doesn't really pay for itself as easily, which will actually lead to the next item we'll talk about. And even recently, IDL, Idaho Department of Lands, has had a tough time getting soliciting feedback from various jurisdictions regarding adding docs on Spokane River and so forth. And so I think if we can have more feedback coming from different departments, like you said, Randy, you send out emails asking, soliciting feedback on various projects, and a lot of times only half the jurisdictions even reply. Yeah, at best. And so, you know, without that feedback, there's very little for decision makers to take into account. And for some of the people who are new here, Jonathan, would you be able to put the dashboard up? This was put up on the county's website. It's a growth dashboard. One of the things that, as a relatively new commissioner, I noticed is that, you know, coming from a business background, we tend to always look for numbers and reports to discuss what is going on inside our business. And we don't really have that as much, you know, when it comes to the government side of things. And so this growth dashboard was put up on the website as a way to see the health of the various county services and provide some metrics based upon industry standards largely. And it's just an indicator of what's going on. We have red, yellow, and green. And that just kind of gives us a sense as to what's happening. Each of the departments should be updating them once a month. The only one that gets updated annually, if I recall, is the prosecuting attorney. But there was a period of time where their workload was so excessive that they actually were starting to consider if they were even going to prosecute some misdemeanor crimes. And, you know, when we get into a world of not prosecuting misdemeanor crimes, it actually can lead to more crime down the road. And so understanding that, those metrics, and this is something that, you know, for each of your cities, you may want to consider looking at to start developing these metrics. So you can understand how growth decisions can affect your services, where your service levels are today, and where they might be tomorrow with no adjustments based upon future growth.
I would rather have it where each individual entity does their own stuff, so we don't have cookie cutters running around here. Because I'm going to have a, I probably have a different opinion. Because otherwise, we're going to get cookie cutter stuff, and I don't think that's what the United States of America was built upon.
Well, I mean, you know, you're certainly open to share your thoughts on this. I mean, this is really just a discussion item.
That's right.
Yeah. So, but it's just something that, you know, I think, you know, with some newer cities here at this meeting, I just really wanted to, you know, revisit that. But-
Newer cities?
Well, attending.
Okay.
Previous meetings, we didn't have all the cities or some of the smaller cities attending.
We used to have them a few years ago.
Well, we started these back up. So I think, I think we'll be at two years come this fall, doing these again. So anyhow, does anyone have any questions, comments, thoughts? The hope is that we can continue to work together on this stuff, like we talked about last time. Next up are impact fees. And the understanding is that we have the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that's the lawsuit with the treasurer's office. I don't think that has progressed much since the last time we met.
Chairman Tari, the, that case is set for oral argument on May the 9th down in Boise. And so a decision would follow that probably within, you know, a few months after the hearing.
So likely by the time we meet again?
Yes.
Okay. But it hasn't moved since the last time, though. Just, just setting up a date for oral arguments. So with the understanding that that still is out there, we put together a document. Emily Smith has been gracious to give her time and take a look at it. And based upon how it is right now, it seems to be a good foundation. My hope is, is that we can still get this up to the starting line with no expectation of having the cities collect it until this lawsuit is behind us, and then we can have that discussion. And Emily, did you want to add a few comments?
Sure. Yeah, so I have seen the final impact fee study. It looks like it's something that I would probably be okay presenting to my impact fee advisory board. I've also seen the basic intergovernmental agreement between the county and what will be the cities. It also looks to be a good form to start working towards presenting to our advisory board. So I think with the understanding, obviously, that we probably wouldn't collect until the lawsuit is finalized, I, I think we can start taking steps in Rathram at least to start reviewing the documents with our boards and with our elected officials to consider adopting the impact fee within Rathram.
And this is the jail impact fee. And if anyone would like a copy now, just raise your hand. Sarah can hand one out. And we will follow up electronically and make sure that you have a copy in your email. Any questions, comments? Yes?
Commissioner, on that, I just want to reemphasize the elephant in the room, that, that we have been very strongly opposed to adopting any of the impact fees until those penalties and interests are returned. And I know that we're waiting on that lawsuit with the Supreme Court. But in the, in that, we're looking for all of the past that were collected to be returned, not just to start forward. So as we move forward on that, I just want you to know that that's our, our push forward on that.
And, excuse me. You know, if the Supreme Court rules in favor of the cities and the highway districts, that is what would happen. It is being kept in county accounts, you know, specifically designated for that purpose and earning interest as we go. So.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? You guys are very easy today. All right. Well, that's item three. Item four is methodologies for financial contributions to CityLink from participating cities. It's a discussion item. And Commissioner Leslie Duncan?
Yes. So, thank you, Pat. Right now, the methodology is based strictly on population, and I don't think it's been updated for a few years. So what I wanted to propose and listen to the different cities involved in CityLink and ones who may want to be involved in the future, what a methodology to better fund the program to take some of the burden off county taxpayers who do not have any stops within the county. Now, I still believe it is a good program, and county residents still can benefit even though there's no county stops. So with that, based on population, there's also sales tax formula. We could do valuation and population. We could do mileage, number of stops, geographic area, cost per mile. So there's a bunch of different ways to, to go about this. And I just kind of wanted some feedback on if, number one, you wanted the methodology, methodology to change or just be updated with current population, or kind of what that would look like. So any thoughts on doing that?
Commissioner Duncan, I'm wondering if maybe this would be something for myself, any other city that would be interested in meeting, just a small subcommittee could look at the different formulas to see what might fit this contribution the best.
I love that idea.
Yeah, Corral Lane would obviously subscribe to that. So Commissioner, for dollar amounts, it's approximately $66,000 that the county is contributing to CityLink?
Today, but that is like cash funds. We also have legal funds, and we have insurance and stuff like that. That's not added into that $66,000. So we'd have to get you kind of a, a better number.
So the county would like to be paid fully for a public transit system that is in the county?
Potentially, but that would be up to my co-commissioners.
Commissioner Duncan, the one thing that, and Rathram isn't involved in this right now, and there may be a point in time where Rathram does become involved in this. But I just, one of the things that concerned me in your comments is that there's no county stops. Actually, I would disagree with that. Every stop is within the county. And every citizen in this county, whether they're in the city or outside of the city, pays an equal share of county property taxes. And I don't want that to be forgotten in this, this whole discussion. So every stop is in the county.
I appreciate that, that perspective. Thank you. So, sounds like maybe a subcommittee might be in order then?
Joe Haden would participate with that.
I would ask Chad to be a member of that as well. He knows that program better than the cities do. The city and county has a number of partnerships that exist for the benefit of all. I could go to emergency medical services system and look at who carries a lot of freight on that. And that provides service everywhere. We don't, well, the fire departments and the fire districts that participate carry the brunt of that, but EMS buys the ambulances. So let me ask a challenging question back. There's federal dollars that have come forward to the commissioners to be voted upon to acquire buses, and that has been tabled, I believe, is where that's at. And you've been given some additional time to look at that. Is that going to be decided upon before we get through this formula? Or is one teeter tottered against each other? How would I look at that as a city that's contributing over $100,000 to CityLink on an annual basis?
I'd have to ask my co-commissioners, because I haven't been against that particular grant. So I think it's come before the board three times. So is that something that the board would consider approving in order to keep the flow going?
Well, look, I'll, I'll give you a little bit of an update. Because, you know, the outcome of how transit works out could impact cities differently. The new BOCC is looking into all options regarding transit. We're evaluating the various fiscal impacts of going from hiring more staff to reducing or winding it down significantly. And we're evaluating that. Let me remind you that last year I brought up the idea of a joint powers agreement that would allow the cities to control the future of transit. And at this point, as I've mentioned before, we are two commissioner votes away from connecting it to Spokane, and we're two commissioners votes away from, you know, changing the service levels. So, you know, if anyone is serious about providing, you know, transit services to their constituents, I would highly encourage to at least revisit, reconsider the idea of a joint powers agreement. It is done in other parts of the state. This is not unusual. What is actually unusual is the county actually doing it. And I don't believe this is a time for that discussion, but I would be happy to sit down and meet with anyone, a group of people, if you want to look at that and talk about that. And, you know, this item of methodologies would fall right into that as well. So I think that's really where the board is at this point in time. Commissioner Everline, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Not here.
That answer your question?
Did you have anything else that you wanted to add, Commissioner Duncan?
Not for this one. So I'm looking to hearing from the subcommittee.
The next item is number five, CityLink, and it's with Mayor Ron Jacobson, who's not here. Did you have someone that you wanted, who wanted to discuss this?
So we were asked for agenda items and basically felt that this was one that was coming back from the prior discussions to update you with CityLink. Did come and present to our council last month?
Yeah.
In a workshop, just to educate and update our council on transit, what the bus does within the Post Falls area. And also, we had some ride alongs last fall, and Council Westland was able to attend those ride alongs along with some staff. So it was just an update on our part.
Okay. Well, thank you. Next item is area of city impact. It's discussion. And again, Mayor Ron Jacobson. Did you want to talk about that?
So I think what we're looking for here is just kind of looking around the table, see where everybody is at, given that we're all facing a deadline of having a new area of impact in place by the end of this calendar year. I touched base with Director Callahan a week ago. We presented to our council last night a new draft map that we would potentially be forwarding to the county for consideration. We've met with, I think, most of the cities that we share boundaries with and are trying to work out any potential overlaps or conflicts. And I think we're mostly there, but I, I am not sure- And I think we're mostly there, but I, I am not sure, as I sit here, where all the other cities are in, in their process of having their electeds review those, those maps. And so I was just, I think we were hoping to get a sense of where everybody's at. I think our ideal would be that we all sort of reach conclusion on maps and bring those forward to the county at one time so we go through one hearing process rather than a protracted series of hearings on these. So I, I think that was kind of the idea, was just to have a bit of a roundtable and see where people are at.
I can speak to Hayden Lake since Pete Bredesen wasn't able to make it today. Pete and I have come to an agreement on, on a area of impact, well, at least, you know, the, the area of impact agreement, the language, and then it would have to, you know, Hayden Lake would, they'd need to update their map and, you know, legal description, potentially. But that's probably the one that's closest to being ready to come before the county commissioner.
And I might add in, Pat, our city and Hayden are looking, we have actually staff looking at that this morning, comparing, make sure we don't have overlap areas and things like that.
Right.
So we can finalize that.
Good.
Anybody else have any comments, thoughts?
In Rathram, after we had the meeting last year between the different cities, we did adopt an updated area of impact by our city council last fall or last winter. And I am currently reviewing the agreement that Dave has sent me to see what updates it needs. It does need a bit of updating in accordance with the new code.
Sorry, well, I was, I can send you the one that Pete and I agreed to because Pete made a lot of those.
Maybe that would be better.
So, yeah.
That might be helpful.
We can send them to all the, all the other cities, including.
There's not a lot of change, but.
No, there is some change, not a lot, but there are some.
It's useful.
And then we are working on finalizing the legal description of the area that we have already adopted.
Yeah, and Pete was really good about, you know, giving me the statutory authority for each of his changes.
Yep. That's basically all that I added in, some bunch of statutory authority for different things, so.
So that might be less work for you guys.
That would be nice, yes.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Any other comments, thoughts?
May I have a question?
Well, we're not at public comment just yet. Anybody? Okay, well, that concludes item six. There are no other items here. I would encourage that if the cities have discussion items, to submit them. The whole point of these meetings is to try to understand where issues may be and how we can try to resolve them. And so it'd be important that if you do have an issue, please bring it before, before us so we can have that discussion. With that said, public comment, did you want to come up and make a public comment?
I was just curious.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Is it on already? Yeah. I was just curious.
And state your name, too, please.
Laurie Yarborough, City of Athel, the clerk treasurer. On those area of impacts, we are a little concerned on the language of the county giving the, the authority back to the city to deny applications, feeling like that was not really legal. Is that what everybody else is kind of feeling or they agree that you can?
That's, that's one of the corrections that was made.
Okay. That's what, that was our only uncomfortable, we did the map and everything else already.
I think we're all on the same page, Sarah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Good morning, everybody. Ron Hartman. I live in the county. I don't live in one of the cities. I live down by Kid Island Bay. And my property taxes are different than other people. I don't have curbside pickup for my trash. I don't have leaves picked up. I don't have city parks. I don't have fire departments at the same. My taxes don't reflect that. Yet, on my taxes is transit. Now, there are no bus stops down there. I'm in the county. I cannot use that service. There's no buses that run there. There's no buses that run over to Harrison. There's no buses that run up to Athel. And yet, that is on my property taxes. Now, Boise does not require the county to provide a transit bus service. There's only one county in this state that operates for. That's this county. So to say that everybody, everybody in the county, it's a county stop, I completely disagree with you. There is no way I can use that bus service. None whatsoever. Now, when it comes to school buses, the school buses have to come all the way out there. That's different. And I do pay for that. And I also pay for the North Idaho College, which is available to me. These buses aren't available to me. They're running down to a casino. You've got buses that are being bought by the county that are given to Kootenay Health. That isn't even a public organization. What about the other hospitals? We don't provide them buses. And like all government agencies, they're a cancer that continues to grow. This is no exception to that. This is growing every year. And we haven't identified all the costs that is put on the burden of these, of the county commissioners here. One of them is liability. One of them is if they fill a grant out wrong, how it affects the rest of the grants in the county. They're taking on a lot of risk. And you guys, I'm sorry, I'm going to use the word of getting a free ride. You put a little money in the cup and that's it. Other than that, you've got no skin in the game. And you're letting them do all the work. I think it's time to have it managed like Commissioner Matarie is saying, like the way the roads are done. And you guys need to step up.
Mr. Hartman, that's, that's your three minutes. Thank you. Anyone else want to make public comment?
Pat, does that fall into the category of taxation without representation when somebody's?
I would say not because it is available to, not in this particular situation. Well, if you, if you, you know, you do have the option of, you know, coming to a stop or the transit center and taking a bus where you need to go.
Well, I'm talking about garbage in particular.
Oh, garbage? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about transit. That, that's my fault. You know, I don't know, I'm.
Jack it out and see?
It's, well, it would be part, like, if you live in a city, it would be, well, you have the city utility that typically, you know, charges for that. Like, I, you know, I pay the city of Post Falls for, you know, garbage pickup service where if you're in the county, you may not have it or you may, you know, directly contract with the garbage hauler to do that. But, you know, the county taxes that pays for the solid waste facilities, and that's of course open to everyone, you know, that resides in the county. And so in that case, I don't think it's taxation. And, and we all vote for the commissioners that, you know, impose the property taxes and provide the solid waste services as well. So I, I think it's, you know, taxation but with representation and with, you know, for that service that's provided.
But if you don't.
And the solid waste, solid waste fee.
If you don't get tack, if you don't get representation or, you know, garbage service, then how does that come in?
What do you mean, if you don't get representation?
If, if, if you, if you don't get garbage at your house because of the, the lines don't go there.
Uh huh.
And so, what are we supposed to do?
There's rural collection sites. Like, we, we don't have garbage at our neighborhoods, so we take it to the rural collection site.
So, you know, and that's provided and, you know, your representation is the Board of County Commissioners for that, for that. So, you know, I think there is, you know, taxation obviously, but there's representation as well.
Yeah, I guess. If you argue the point.
Yeah, I.
Sure.
Thanks, commissioners. So if we're talking sanitation, it's a fee for service. Our sanitation department, City of Coeur d'Alene, does not collect property taxes to pay for the franchise agreement we have with the hauler. Kootenay County is the same way. It's an enterprise fund. No property taxes go into your sanitation fund. It's a fee that shows up on our property taxes. So there's no taxation for the sanitation charges. It is a fee that is added to, a unique way, the property tax bill. City of Coeur d'Alene does not take any of its property taxes to pay for the franchise agreement we have to pick up solid waste. The Post Falls is the same way. So that's the answer to that question.
Does anybody have any additional public comment they would like to make? Come on up to the microphone.
Just a little bit.
State your name.
Kay Thornbrough, Hayden, but also the Coeur d'Alene Press. It's really kind of a thought slash question for the commissioners. Obviously, the JPA is a topic that we've been having floating around at the county level. If I recall, I think it was last fall, there's a lot of conversation between the cities and the county about this topic. Several of the cities articulated why maybe that wasn't desirable for them. It was set aside. Here we have it returning. I guess I'm asking from the commissioners' perspective, are you seeing this as a one-to-one, that the cities agree to this JPA or public transit services are scaled back or what's the, what's the vision here?
Well, since this is public comment, you can make your comment. And that would be a question that would be answered either offline or in a different setting.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Anybody online? 10:44, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much for coming out.